Yeah.
After struggling with that for like for over a week.
Hi, everyone. I'm here.
Good, Councilor Novak.
Recording in progress.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us this afternoon at the Monday, October 11th, 2021 work session for Albany City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do a roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Ortholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Gabe. I appreciate that. So for the business from the public, the next agenda item, persons wanting to address the council during business from the public and/or provide written materials for the public record must register to speak and attach the materials with the web address posted before noon in the day of the meeting. At this time, staff reports to me that there's no business from the public written or speaker signed up. And so because of that, I'm going to go ahead to the next agenda item. Park Services Officer, Chief Albany Police Chief Marshall Harden and Parks and Rec. Director Kim Lade will be addressing it on page two of your your agenda packet.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a quick comment first?
Sure, go ahead.
Just you are all aware of the tragedy that happened last night in Timberland Park. I just want to remind you that it's under investigation and Chief Harden won't be able to answer any questions on that. So we should keep our conversations to the Park Services Officer.
Understood. Thank you very much for that, Peter. So Chief, Director Lade, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councillors. I don't know if is Kim on the call?
Is getting on as we speak.
Oh, okay. Kim was going to lead us off, so I'll wait for her to kind of chime in here. There she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Sorry, I apologize. I was experiencing some technical difficulties on my end, and so I apologize. All are speedy and moving through things quickly. So I guess it's 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 our show now. So Marshall, thanks so much for kicking it off. Um, all right, let me pull it up really quick. All right. So good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present today. Chief Harden and I are here today bringing forward a proposal to add one FTE for the position of a Park Services Officer. This isn't the first time this idea has been discussed between the two departments, as we believe both we know both our predecessors had this conversation. But it is the first time that we've been able to identify a funding source to help support this need. So that's why we are here. So the new position would support both programs who are incredibly understaffed. Increasingly, more and more time is being spent on activities on our parks and our trails and by our facilities. These activities take our limited park staff away from their primary focus, which is the care and maintenance of our green spaces on our parks and trails, and they take our CSOs and our sworn officers away from other needs. I'm sure you all are well aware, but in the last few months, there have been substantial hours spent between both departments working on issues along periwinkle paths, cleaning up garbage, dealing with vandalism, and camping in our parks. So the Park Services Officer will help to keep an eye on our 32 parks and close to 900 acres. They'll submit work orders, incident reports, and help ensure safety and security. But importantly, they'll serve as an ambassador, helping to provide answers to questions to those who visit our parks, to provide resource information to those needs, and yes, also enforce park rules and regulations when that is needed. At this time, a significant amount of their time will go towards addressing illegal camping. But we believe that by creating a relationship and letting folks know about what is allowed and what isn't allowed and providing them with services before they really get established and rooted into one spot will help to cut down on some of our larger, more well-established camps. Other communities are and parks and recreation departments have also added either park rangers or park services officers. Albany is not alone in dealing with the issues that we see taking place in our public spaces. While a park services officer alone won't solve all of our problems, we believe it's a significant step in the right direction, and we're excited to bring it to you today. The position will be funded split between each department. I know I'm able to say on the parks and recreation side, this is made possible by the passing of the city services fee, as that is providing the support for this position. And yeah, the chief and I are able to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel. Counselor Johnson, you're first up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was, as I'm reading this, got me thinking, and I did some research on it back in 2002 when we passed the Public Safety Levy. There was, it was to be, well, it was dedicated to a like park ranger type thing, which is exactly, I think, what we're doing here. And I guess somewhere down the line that got overtaken by regular police officers. I'm not exactly sure, but this was an idea way back then that we needed some of it. Basically, it was for the skate park to make sure that that was kept under control. But I, I don't know, I think it's it's a good idea because I see so many camp, little camps and whatever, and we don't want that to get started here. So I think it's a good idea. I don't know how one person's going to cover 50 parks, but you know, I guess they'll do the best they can. So I'm in favor of this, but I just want to let everybody know that it was initially a thought of when the Public Safety Levy was passed back in 2002.
Thank you for that, Counsel Johnson. Who's next? Oh, Counsel Ortholomew, you're next. Are you? Are you not pulling your you're pulling your hand back down? I can't hear you.
I have to unmute. I started talking. Okay, I can talk now. The, when you were speaking, you said something about clearing larger camps, and I was wondering if that was on the agenda for this person, and if that was on the agenda for this year.
Sure. So I think for I know our staffer out there, police staffer out there, it's actually have some stats actually saying about that. 2019 was our last typical year, and our department alone held 6.2 tons of trash out of camps. That's just in in a year. And at one point, there was 3,500 pounds of trash that came out of just camps at Bowman and Simpson on a weekend alone. So those numbers have gone down over the past two years just because of A, COVID, and B, because of the fact that we are both significantly reduced with our staffing. And so it would be something that when this new position comes on, they'd be working with the chief, they'd be working with Rick and their teams to determine when we will go in and begin working on some other sites. But it isn't going to be something that one person's going to be able to do alone, just the magnitude of stuff, as well as safety wise. I'm sure the chief can chat more about it, but it would have to be a coordinated, larger project.
Yeah, and I'll add on to that. The intent of this job is not to manage just our camps in itself. The purpose of it is to stay on top of the little things, make contact with people that perhaps that are beginning to struggle and get them directed towards resources and discourage camping in open public spaces. In particular, there's a there's a very large camp that Kim and I just were made aware of in Tekeena Landing that's going to be a significant cost to the city. So early intervention is what this person is designed to do, to try to not let these large camps take hold, but try to get resources to these people before those large camps get established.
Counsel, any more, any additional questions?
I was just wondering if if people were going to be cleared out of camps, or it was just a cleanup effort?
The this position is not, there's a coordinated approach that comes to dealing with occupied encampments. Usually, there's the effort to post and establish resources there. This position is not designed to remove people from camps. It's to deal with the other smaller time consuming things that are occurring at our parks that are tying up the park staff and the police staff. We have a sworn sergeant that's doing all of that now. And this is a more efficient way of staying on top of the smaller concern, safety things, and outreach in the parks where we can focus on some of the larger problems through the city solutions team.
I thank you very much, Chief. I see that Counsel Smith has her hand up.
I just had one question. This will this position be assigned to one individual, or will it be something that will rotate among other individuals to to provide coverage around the clock?
It is one assigned to one individual with the other CSOs and the CRU Sergeant helping them as needed, but it would not pass or be a 24/7 operation where they all do the same work. This frees up our CSOs to concentrate on other livability issues, and this person is one person assigned just to the parks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Counselor Bartholomew is ready again.
So this is not hiring within the police department. This is hiring outside or new a new person. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, we're going to open up internally to park staff and existing police staff who maybe want to move over to the position. We have a couple of our existing CSOs that might be interested in it. So we'll open up internally. And if we don't get the proper candidate, we'll go to an external candidate.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, well, this is a small step. It's much it's a much needed step. So it's not designed to try and solve all the problems of the world, but it is something that is definitely needed, and I'm all in favor of it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counsel Bartholomew.
Is it going to be coordinated with the rabbit or the the community response team? Is it going to be part of that? Because since they'll be like a first kind of initial responder, or is that part of their job? I'm just trying to understand how it's all going to be coordinated.
Sure.
Because we have all of these different systems.
Yep. No, I it's a good, great question. As you know, our CSOs already do a lot of livability and outreach to our citizens. We modeled the position off of a CSO position is called a PSO position. Additionally, they would get some training through the Parks Department on how to do outreach through programs and things like that, as well as we're going to do some crisis intervention training with our staff because they're going to run into people in crisis in our parks and have give them the tools and the resources to work with those individuals and get them the care that they need. And we're, this is a non sworn position. So this is not a police officer position. It's a community service officer type position. So they're not armed. They'll be in a uniform. So when we deal with things where there might be a danger person in the park or some sort of altercation, this person's going to back away and let officers respond. Whereas right now, they're going to be dealing with an armed police officer, and that maybe not be the best line of defense, so to speak. So this is a first step, non sworn police officer position. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. I appreciated that it was a person who was not regularly armed and was going in with all those skills and to address situations preemptively. Thank you for all that clarification. Really appreciate it.
Counselor Johnson first, and then we'll go with Counselor Novak.
I think Kim had something to say.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Additionally, chatting with the chief, they're not going to look like a normal CSO. They'll be kind of in their olive drab, so they'll look more parky, if that makes sense. And so that also might help to bridge that gap a little bit.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Johnson, you're next up.
Well, now it's coming a little bit clearer and stuff, and I'm thinking, that's one heck of a high wage for someone who's not a sworn police officer, not, you know, I mean, and I just wondered, what are they going to do then? I mean, if they can't, I mean, they're gonna tell people about services for $95,000 a year? That's a lot of money. Yesterday.
So.
Just to clarify, the the dollar amount that you're seeing in the memo is salary and benefits combined. It's not the straight salary.
Yeah, I understand that. But what, what would an average beginning officer, what would theirs be?
I'd have to check on the numbers. It's going to be higher than that, though. This is, again, if you were, if we were to hire a CSO, this is what they would get paid. So there, think of it like a community service officer. This is, it's almost on par to that particular position.
Yes. So something happens in the city and stuff, they're really not going to be able to go and assist another officer for something. So this is just kind of a, I don't know what even to call it and stuff. That that is not what I thought it was going to be. So I have to think about this one. Thank you.
I think just a minute, Counselor Novak, Director Lade had her hand up first. I'm gonna come back to you, Counselor.
Sorry, the chief mentioned it. It is the same as a CSO at this point, which they're being pulled nonstop as is, so they're not able to address what's currently going on. So there's a backlog even with our current CSOs. And so while this person will be primarily dealing with things in our parks and our facilities, if something were to happen that an additional CSO body would be needed, there would be another resource to help support the the police department. So it isn't us bringing in necessarily anybody higher. It's it's just adding another another tool to our toolbox that is currently understaffed.
Thank you. Counselor Novak, would you go ahead, and I'll have City Manager after that.
Thank you. I guess I just need clarification. Again, this is a city services officer who will be dressing more like a park ranger and who would be in the parks but unarmed? Is this is that correct? Did I understand correctly?
Correct. Their primary role would be to do park related activities and support our parks, which we're having trouble doing as a police department right now. So this is, as Director Lade said, this is allowing us to get caught up, so to speak, and we spend a lot of time, a lot of police resources in the parks right now. And both departments could greatly benefit from the service. So that's why we were splitting the cost of the FTE.
Yeah. May I just add that without bringing, I mean, I won't discuss what we're not supposed to discuss, but in light of what took place last evening, it seems to me that this individual, we'd be better off having someone who was more along the lines of an officer in in their ability to intervene, I would say. I would be much more comfortable with this being someone who could do more than direct people to services. And that, I guess my initial understanding was that it would be more of an officer type individual who was in the parks. I, I would prefer that, quite honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me go to City Manager, he had his hand up for a while.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that what this is is an attempt to do things in a more cost effective way. You know, having a sworn police officer address many of the things that this park services officer is going to address is an expensive way of doing that. A sworn police officer, because of the training that they go through and many other reasons, is paid substantially more. So certainly, we could increase the number of police officers and handle this this responsibility that way. But this is the wiser, more cost effective way of doing it. And as far as helping elsewhere in the city, they certainly are able to. They're just subject to the limitations that a non sworn officer is subject to. But as we've already noted, with the 33 parks we have, they're going to be fully employed, and that's what we expect. So yes, the police officers and the police department are also very gainfully employed. This is just an effort to try to take care of certain lower level things in the parks in a more cost effective manner.
Thank you for that clarification, Peter. I have a comment to make. Observation wise, we mentioned something that happened last night. This officer would not have been called to this situation in the first place. It happened after, you know, close to midnight. And so it would have been responded to by us one police officer that is tasked with handling those kinds of issues. So I think this is a great idea. I know that people feel comfortable when they see the city responding to issues. Sometimes a sworn officer is not required for those issues. But they have the radio communication, I imagine, to call for backup or call for assistance and that should something occur. So I think it's a good idea. I'm hoping that the council and will decide that this is also a good idea. The salary, the salary for me doesn't really bother me. But I'm just one person. Counsel, what would you like to do? Would you like to come back on Wednesday night?
Yes.
Yes. You have one more question, Counselor Novak? You're muted. You're muted. Can't hear you, Counselor Novak.
Unmute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm unmuted now. I was wondering if the city manager could elaborate on those limitations that he mentioned, because this officer would be operating under some limitations, and I need to know what those are, if I could, please.
Certainly. And Chief Harden would be better poised to answer that. But I would say that when I said limitations, it's simply that if you are operating without the training and the equipment that a police officer has, then basically, you know, you're really limited to the situations in which you can respond. So Chief, can you elaborate a little bit?
Correct. Obviously, they're they're not armed. They will be in uniform. So there'll be a deterrent to the position. We intentionally wanted them to look different to make them more approachable for parks goers and that, because there is an education component from the park side. But they will, if there is a crime that's occurring in their presence, they're not necessarily going to be able to to intervene on that, but they can get help there fairly immediately. And I equate it a lot to our CSOs, where they help out on a lot of low qual or livability issues or quality of life issues in the region. But if there's anything where they encounter someone who's hostile, who's committing a crime, then they can summon the police officer to the location. Where now, they, we don't have our CSOs working in the parks. We're very busy elsewhere in the city, so a police sergeant has to do that. And I would agree with the city manager that this is a much more efficient way and giving us an extra set of hands and feet to really make our parks a lot safer.
Okay, thank you. At least if they could call for backup quickly, that would, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
That's one of the reasons we're housing the position within the police department, because it'll be immediately in contact with our communications center.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Chief, and thank you, Counselor Novak, for those questions. Counsel, we're going to have him come back on Wednesday night. I think we had everybody on board. So Chief, Director Lade, and I'll see you on Wednesday night.
Thank you.
So next up is a recess to the executive session to discuss labor relations per ORS 192.660 subsection D. I'm going to read this document script. Representatives of news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants will be moved into a waiting room, or you can leave and rejoin the meeting in a few minutes. Your screen will display the message. Please wait. The meeting will host will soon let you in, let you in soon. When the council returns to open session, participants remaining in the waiting room will be recent readmitted to the meeting. Representatives, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any other deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions were made during executive session. I'll read now recess the execution time. It's 4:23 PM. It's four twenty-three P M.
I now recessed executive session at time four fifty eight P M. I now reconvene the regular session at this time, motions if any.
Thank you.
So thank you. We'd like you to come back and talk with us later. Any business from the council? I see on my screen Council Captain's first. Okay, Councilor Brethallam, you? Council Johnson.
Yeah, I was just if Chief Harden is still on. And every once in a while we're driving down the area between Helping Hands and the at home furniture store seems to be a real catch for tents and shopping carts and like that. So I just wondered when you see something like that, who should we call? Should we just call the non emergency number or what would what would be the best thing to do?
I don't see. I don't see it online at this point, but I would say, Council Johnson, that the non emergent line would be the appropriate way to go.
Okay, yeah, because you know, you think, okay, well, I'm sure ten other people have reported us, so maybe I won't, but you know, I just wonder. So thanks. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Council Johnson. Council Novak.
Yeah, pardon me, my clock is chiming. I have a gentleman that I would like to have serve on the H R C and I've been in touch with the head of the H R C, although I need to reach out to her again and also with the city officials. This is a gentleman who has, we have no representation. He has dealt with severe physical challenge from an accident in his work life for most of his adult life, and I would really like to have him on the H R C. The reason I'm mentioning it is because he lives in Tangent. And I think that the fact that we don't have anyone like him, that my understanding of the whole reason we have an H R C is to give people who are not represented or underrepresented a voice in our community. And this gentleman is paralyzed from the shoulders down. And I he's lived most of his life, adult life with that situation. I also really appreciate him as a human being and I he's a good man. I want him on the H R C. So I am hopeful that the council will be willing to make whatever accommodation we need to have so that he will be able to serve. He really has a heart to serve. And I just wanted to make you all aware of that since I have not exactly been communicating with all of you. Mayor, you know about him, but the rest of the council does not necessarily. So I believe I think his voice needs to be heard. People, people in his type of situation with his type of challenge, we have no one on the H R C in that in that camp. So thank you.
Council Johnson, you're next up.
Yeah, and and I can appreciate Council Novak's sentiment on this. I in my we have to stay within the city limits of Albany, but I would basically basically invite him to come to any of the meetings, you know, that he could get perspective that way. But if you're not in the city limits, you can't be on the the committees because if we did that, then we'd start, we would.
Counselor Johnson, may I remind you that we've made exception in other ways for other things, for instance, with the chief of police not having to be and with directors not having to live in town. To me, I don't think that's I don't think that would be right to say, well, you know, we're going to make it. These people don't have to abide by this particular thing, but we can't possibly extend grace in a situation like this. I really take issue with that, and I hope you'll reconsider that line of thought with regard to what we've done as a council.
Well, thank you, Council Novak. Peter Chelton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to to what Council Novak just mentioned, the council should remember that those are two very different situations. On the one hand, you're talking about employees. And on the other hand, you're talking about people who are representing the community. Employees, there's no real reason why you would have to limit yourself to employees by saying they can only come from a pool of X amount of people. But if you do want to represent the community, you should limit it to that community. However, I would say that the council made this policy about two years ago. Before that, there had been people, members of certain citizen advisory groups who had been from outside the city. And it is certainly within the council's prerogative to make an exception, recognizing that this person brings unique experiences and unique qualifications and would and is wanting to wants to serve on the committee, which is a big thing. That's a that's an important thing. So it's certainly what I would suggest that you consider is is making a one time exception to the policy. If you if you agree with Council Novak that this person would be a good fit for that particular committee. That wouldn't mean that you reversed yourself on your standing policy. You would just be making a one time waiver in this case.
So, Council, you have anything?
No, I can appreciate that. I would really, really appreciate even the just making a single exception. No, I can appreciate that. I would really, really appreciate even the, just making single exception.
Ask any other counselors, if they had anything else. Councilor Kaptiss, did you have anything? Council Bartholomew. Council Smith.
Just to respond to what Council Johnson said earlier about the camping between Helping Hands and At Home Furniture, I believe that's the situation that Mr. Tally was referring to in the, the email that he sent all of us yesterday.
Oh, I wondered if that's what it was. Thanks, Mayor.
So what would you like to do with Council Novak's request? Want to talk about it Wednesday night?
I believe so, yes.
So I'd also, in, in most cases, we actually have a person's application. We haven't seen this person's qualifications, so until then, I'm a reserve comment, so person needs to put an application in so we can see what their qualifications are, because anybody on a, we need to see at least the background. Go ahead, Peter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and, and we can arrange for that. One of the things we were going to try to do was to avoid stringing this person along if the council was adamant that, that they could not serve. But we can continue to correspond with them and obtain that information for you.
Well, the normal process, people put in application, and we print the application, review that, interview them, and then ask them to participate, or ask them to serve. If we just give them approval now without even saying anything, that deviates the process for other people. That's my.
And let me make clear, I wasn't asking you to approve them now, or, or even asking at all. Simply, what, what you will have to do is take, take action to approve all of the, all appointees. But what you would, what you could, and what you are discussing now is the potential for a waiver, a one-time waiver. That's not necessarily approving the appointee, it's just waiving in that process.
So if council's okay with that, we'll come back Wednesday and talk about it. I got nods, I got nods. So we'll talk about it Wednesday, with Council. Good. Council Novak.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Marilyn Smith, Council Smith, you're next up on the last of the counselors.
I have nothing.
Well, thank you. I have a few things. We've been talking about T L T dollars and percentages for months and months. I'd like to, there's some, a future city council meeting, hopefully in November, come back with the the documentation supporting whatever number that we're going to talk about with them, because with the agency. So I'd really like to get this wrapped up before we get into the next, next year. And then I, I've received a great request from the city manager, and I have received feedback as well that when we do our pledge releases and city council meetings, it sounds really bad on the videos and really garbled, and so what I'd like to do is set up a rotation that one, one city council will lead, the pledge releases, and everyone else would mute, and then we'll re, go back to the meeting. So if you guys have supported that, I greatly appreciate a nod.
That sounds good.
Okay, excellent. And then I hope all of you had an opportunity to attend the, go see the new addition to the carousel. Summit was added to the Menagerie, and it was a great event this weekend, and people turned out to come visit with us and ride the carousel, so please stop by the carousel and take a look at Summit de Burrow. And then I recommend, I ask all of you to get out in the community. I've been attending one home game for the football teams in South and West Albany. My intention is to start attending some of the soccer games for the females and basketball games or whatever events out there to show my support for those teams. I can't be out there in the field anymore by choice and retired, but I can show support, and we should all show support to our local high school teams and small youth sports teams. And other than that, I will default, I will turn over the meeting to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in no particular order, I have a couple of things to address for you. Council Johnson asked at the beginning of the meeting about implications of the October eighteenth deadline for vaccinations. And our fire department has, has received that information, and it's not anticipated that we will have any, any resignations. They will all be vaccinated, or there are a few that have sought, will be seeking, are seeking medical exemptions or religious exemptions. So no, no departures are expected. The Cumberland Church, I got word today that the move that was scheduled for tomorrow is now again postponed. This time, it's not postponed to a particular date, because part of the problem is coordinating with businesses on the north side of the street that might lose power during the move, so they're having to coordinate it for Sunday at some time in the future. Councilor Bartholomew had asked for an A D A update, and Eric Eichenoi will be able to provide that at the, at our next council meeting, so two weeks from Wednesday. And let's see here, we have a council, a joint meeting with the planning commission after this meeting at five fifteen, so very quickly after, but again, it'll be on a different platform, just a reminder. And finally, I was able to attend the I C M A board meetings. You know that I'm on the board, I'm now the senior vice president for the West Region in I C M A. I was able to attend ethics training sessions where we provided ethics briefs to the whole membership of I C M A. And I also serve as, on the Veterans Advisory Committee, where we look at building a bridge between veterans and active-duty military people on the one hand, and careers in municipal government on the other hand. And then, of course, there was a whole series of seminars and sessions that the annual conference provides. This was the first conference to happen in person since the pandemic, and it was suffered a little bit in terms of attendance, but it was good to get it started again, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to attend and to work on the board and give back in that way. So pending any questions, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I will see you all Wednesday night at six P M.
And, and now too, right, in about a couple of minutes.
I guess I gotta stay, huh? Okay, so I'll see you in a few minutes at the joint work session. And thank you very much, and we're going to join the meeting. Are we staying in the same session? Or we have to go somewhere else?
No, you need to go to a different session.
All right, see you. This is Bessie. Could you send me the link?